Slow.
I see that.
They need burning.
The polar bear.
Yeah. So of course there's. Putting marks, right? Now if you go to.
You need with them. He tells me, he tells me yesterday, I call, he called, I called back after I talked to you. And he's like.
I can't tell tomorrow.
So I think I'm trying like this. And he says, well, that's fine. My secretary was at four thirty, though. It needs to be before them. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it. She doesn't work an extra hour on Friday. He's like everybody else.
Well, from what I've heard in the past, probably just give me a second.
Hey, there you go. Only like you know.
And the whole thing, I was just like, I don't know, man.
So I mean, what do you, what do you, what do you do?
Hey Bruce.
Yes ma'am.
I'm on my VPN connection. But this computer can't still.
Now you need to minimize your, your, uh, remote desktop. Yeah. And now you should say.
Uh, I don't like. Okay, so I minimized it, but how do I minimize? So click on.
Okay.
Yeah, so I minimized it, but where is it?
Save this. You know.
Okay, alright.
Click on this PC.
Did you get your flight?
Yeah.
Of that.
Like that.
Hey, powerful gonna be, we just sit right here where we are.
No, you have to stand over there. Speaking of speaker, articulate manners.
And, and the smile.
Yeah, Anthony, yes, absolutely. You take your bags off, they're hitting that side of the door.
Right, that's what I've been saying. So then I need to go with this.
Better life, that race is how that goes. And shall we?
All right, like you go to board superpowers to order, um, as always, we start with one of the two most songs. Why the United States and America, the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, the living justice for all. All right, thank you. Um. We do have a form, we do need to adopt the agenda. Anybody else have anything we need to add to this agenda? We do have a play session.
We have to point out that we did have a present here, uh, this presentation, I mean, I want to ask you more.
Clay, you want me to help him get into play session?
But yeah, no, anybody but you. It's a server.
Do you have a play session? Uh.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
The main second. And then on the other two bucks, say nine five, please say some public comment. Anybody?
Not on the screen.
All right, there you go. Don Chair, please.
Alrighty. Alright, well, Jack asked me to come talk to you about the vaccination process is constantly changing and moving. So just a couple of days ago, we were informed that we could get a allocation for three hundred and fifty doses of vaccine here in Madison. So we jumped on that. And we really started ramping up coordination with the county departments to try to make that happen at Firehouse. So next Wednesday, February third, plan on having a vaccination site set up. All the county departments have been invited to help, and I can tell you right up front, every one of them has been more than ready to help the process. And there's a lot of moving parts. I just want to say that we're moving through, working with, uh, EDH, obviously, and then, uh, Culpeper Hospital Association. So those are the two kind of main players that have helped making this go. Uh, reached out to the extension office, they are actually going to help us a whole lot with the registration process. I'm gonna have, go ahead and set up a hotline for our Madison residents, they'll be able to call and get some information about how they can register if they haven't already registered. List that we're going to be getting from VDH is a list of people that have already signed up in the process. So that's how it will be vetted. It won't be jumping in line. These people have already took the survey, they'll be reached out accordingly, uh, to their 1B status. Oh, let's see, what else can we talk about there?
You're gonna, you're gonna contact them.
Yes, okay, that, well, the extension office is going to be our, our, kind of our outreach, a call center. And our outreach, and like I said, they have been more than on board, and, and let's face it, they, they're always planning events and stuff like that. So it was right in, right up there, Allen, to help out. So we're gonna get them the program that, uh, it's called Prep Mod, that the hospital association is using. And all that goes back into a national database, so they can, those numbers you see on the VDH website and CDC website, all that goes back there. So that's what we need to do, is make sure that our numbers are as accurate as possible. So, um, let's see, I'll be putting out a press release later on today. Um, like I said, we talked about the hotline. Um, and, and really, I want to put out a flyer too, because a lot of people don't have email access. Want to make sure that, uh, this flyer goes into all our post offices, um, anywhere can in town, obviously, just get the word out there that if you don't have email access, we, we still want to hear from you to try to get you, uh, vaccination aid if you want one. So, um, what kind of questions can I help you with as far as moving forward? We're just, this is the initial rollout, we got a lot of moving pieces, I'm trying to fill a lot of seats for this, uh, vaccine on Wednesday. We need people from checking in, registering, monitoring the crowd while they wait. Vaccinators, which I can tell you that right now, I got four nurses from our school system that is willing to start that. Know as folks are trying to come on board, uh, they have to come, jump through a few more hoops, but I, I look for that to happen. And then I have more vaccinators as the supply increases. Where we're at right now, I hope the weather, obviously, most people looked at the weather, look like we're gonna get, what, what'd you say, Brian, five or six? Five or six inches Sunday, Monday, hopefully, all that'll be cleared out of here by Wednesday. And also, I just want to make sure too, um, it's clear on the flyer. It's, you know, we have three hundred and fifty doses, we don't want three hundred and fifty people lined up on Main Street at, say, nine o'clock. They're by appointment only, you don't have an appointment, you're not gonna get shot. And we need to stagger that. Anybody who's already got a shot and has been to Culpeper, uh, if you've seen the operation up there, it is awesome. I mean, it is organized beyond, and we just want to follow that model. Just like I said, so it'll be a smooth flow all day long, try to get this vaccinated. So what can I help you with on, any questions?
Yeah, uh, so this is round one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, no feel yet for how often we'll repeat this?
My, my question last night on a call was, how, what's the instructions for questions who are talking about the second dose? And the answer was, and I went back, I circled back and confirmed that, that you will be notified by email or phone. And it'll be very, very close to the day that you're scheduled to get your second shot. So just to share with you, I'm scheduled to get my second shot next week. I'm thinking that maybe we can get a, uh, or I'll, I'll be notified maybe tomorrow.
You did?
There you go, so.
Maybe Wednesday is not the day to go. Are you?
No, I'm going, no, I'm just kidding, no, no, we'll, I'll schedule around that, but yeah. No, that, that's where we're at, I mean, we're trying to move forward, we're trying to do the right thing. Uh, you know, all this comes down to supply, right? But we don't, we certainly don't want to be the ones that are sitting on something that we can move and we're the ones holding the show up. We want to make sure that we run with it. This train's going down the track, we don't want to slow it down. So.
Anybody else got anything on that one?
Where are we gonna do this again?
Fire.
Firehouse.
Okay.
Yep. And like I said, so far, I've got most of the seats filled, Rogers troops, uh, Brian's involved in it. I mean, there's just a lot of people in the county that are stepping up to the plate. Trying to get Chromebooks, I've already been told I can get Chromebooks from the schools to help these people register. When they walk in, if you've been to, up to Culpeper, you saw how they register you on that, uh, Prep Mod program. So that's.
Yeah, so I, I worded my, your answer to my question was good to know, but it wasn't exactly the question.
Oh, okay, well.
And, and that was my fault. Um, when I'm, so we've got, you say three hundred or three hundred and fifty?
Three fifty.
Three fifty doses, those aren't the last three fifty of even the first round, correct? Do we have plans beyond, is this a Wednesday thing?
Oh, oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying. So far, I am planning to have our people in place so that when they do call and say, I have another, but right now, I, I don't know what's coming down the pipeline. I, I, like I, like I stated earlier, I want to make sure that when they do call, like this was kind of an ad hoc thing, they just called two days ago and told me you got it. So we just, we rolled with it. But moving down in the future, I want to make sure, we just don't have to get crazy in two days, we already have our ducks in a row. So when they do call and say, I got three hundred and fifty, um, I'll say, send them to our extension office and we'll get them straightened out.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the management. Us not being able to take, uh, or being able to take more advantage of this than, uh, all these things happen in short notice. John has played groundwork, he's not going to take credit for this, no relationship to all these groups. So, um, we volunteer for them, the county party, and stepped up, he hasn't had a phone call twice. You know, he's a good job, so, um, I will, I guess, to stay up in this way.
But respectfully, all I do, like I said, I have not had one person say they would not be helped, you know, in whatever way they could, and they stepped up like, and I'm, I'm talking instant. I mean, the extension office, school board people, right now, no hesitation. So it, it, that makes life easy, when you just make a phone call, things happen. So did you want to go right into my budget, because it is about as simple as.
It, it is crazy. The mobilization that you discovered. And I know it was hard, it was difficult. Thank, thank John.
You're welcome.
Thank you, brother.
Well, literally, I'm just proposing no changes, uh, I got a reliable vehicle, a computer that works and a phone, that's really all I need. Um, unless you want to hire a whole staff of people, and I don't think that's probably. Yeah, I'm fully staffed right now, unless you want to bump it up. But no, I don't, I don't, I'm not proposing any changes, so.
Well, they're all in, in order, so.
I was scheduled at four o'clock, but I'm standing here in front of you now.
If you guys got questions for Don Chair, he's asking the same thing. We all like to say some money, but this is a good one.
This isn't where we do it.
Well, what, what do we have, Don Chair?
I'm good.
I hope he's bored next year.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it, thanks again.
Thank you, John. Um. Gerald, Gerald Carter, Jim Carter, the front. So you can study there if you're, huh?
Said I thought you were serious.
All right, Gerald, what do we have?
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank. Thank, uh, the board for all their support the last couple of years. Uh, really progressed a lot, Parks and Rec, invite you guys, it would not be possible, I really want to thank you for that. Uh, twenty twenty was, we were expecting a big year, then. Along comes COVID and it changed a lot of our plans, but we were also, we're able to do some things. We were able to finish two picnic shelters, where we get electricity for the special event, uh, farmer's market town on the road up there. Uh, we were able to put four grills around the park, finish up the concession stand. We're also able to do some events with the woods, Lindsay come up with story walk and scavenger hunts. We have new programs for children and adults, and music and movies in the park, Social Distances, and, um, also the Smores Santa lecture. Uh, all this stuff we did, the events and stuff was per CDC guidelines. And, uh, it was a big help for us. Um, for twenty twenty one, we're, have more events and youth sports, hopefully, uh, get off the ground per the COVID restrictions. Um, what really helps Parks and Rec is our volunteers, uh, and our amazing staff of people. Uh, with that, we're all becoming one big family, we're all working together to save the ball. Uh, a big additions for the budget next year is we have to provide ADA accessibility to all our, all fields. Uh, one field is fifteen thousand dollars for an ADA accessible to that one field. Also, we're wanting to put garage doors, um, the red barn for security.
Well, I just, I just want to commend Jerry and Lindsay and the staff for actually having things going on during twenty twenty because they really haven't do a lot of thinking outside the box in order to have some things going on for the community, yet abide by all the guidelines and what we had to do and whatnot. So I know, uh, there are a lot of people upset that we're not able to do youth sports and every, I mean, I think. Every, anybody who wants to have youth sports going on, it's no doubt, but as, as it's going right now, we, we're still on hold with that kind of stuff. Uh, what Jerry was talking about, the accessibility to the ball fields, is the county has given us, uh, permission trying at least get one of these, uh, ADA, uh, paths to each ball field, uh, per year, instead of hitting us all at one time. So kind of got a variance to ride over the next four years, try and get those, those pathways done. And, uh, being that the Hoover Ridge Bridge was developed in so many different terraces, that's really just what's put a big, uh, uh, price tag on some of this stuff, because it's not just a flat area from point A to point B. And as y'all know, ADA, it's a one percent grade, if you don't have a one percent grade, you gotta make a one percent grade. If that means zigzagging down to get there, so it's gotta be. Uh, now again, uh, I think, I think we had a lot of, a lot of good participation in everything we had going on, so thanks again, Jerry and Lindsay.
The big addition on this, I mean, the two forty six, six forty four, and the two sixty six oh ninety this year is based on paid customers. Um, DRA board has looked at it, and we think they both bring big things to the table. Um, and are, are liable to what happened out there. Um, that's, that's a big question.
Yeah, um. I mean, so I, Clay and I both go to their meetings as board reps, and, um, I think their creativity, especially this year, really came out, really surfaced. Their creativity was just a, a testament to the dedication that this staff has to, uh, the Madison residents. And I think that, uh, the, the twenty thousand dollars increase in their budget they're asking for is money, uh, that the residents will find is well spent, and we will get a good return on that investment. We are, the Parks and Rec is, is just sitting there sort of like a frog getting ready to leave, you know? All we gotta do is get rid of this COVID stuff, and away we go, I'm, I'm convinced, so I thank you all.
Any questions for Jerry, Lindsay, or Val? Or, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, not Val.
Anybody? All right, thank you all very much, Gerald, we're back. Roger?
Bruce, did you check your video?
Uh, does it work? Let me jump out on YouTube. It said it's not work.
Roger?
I think on the facilities, uh, needed increase in the fuel and the, um. Uh, let's see, where's second page, Jack? The fuel, and then I've gotten prices on, um, getting prices on painting some buildings, but, um, I don't know whether that's, uh, capital or what that, what that goes under. And pretty much the rest of it's the same on the, on the facilities.
Hey Roger, I, I saw also in. In the sheriff's budget, he was, he's got a, uh, fuel increase, but we, is this gasoline prices deep?
Mine, mine is because I added a person.
Oh, okay.
My budget was at thirty five hundred, and I, we hired Joe af- after the budget was adopted.
Oh, so you got another vehicle?
So I got another vehicle, with another person, so that's why, uh, fuel had to, had to be increased.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I've almost used my fuel now. On forty two, four hundred, um, I talked to Jack and, uh, we increased the, um, two percent for the, um, the hauling and the tipping and the, um, disposal. And then the, uh, facilities charge, we went up, we did, we did everything two percent there. And then the two thousand that I added at the scales was because we've got old scales and we've had some problems with them this year, some stuff we had to, uh, replace on them. So I don't know what the life of those, what those are, they've been there since original, I guess, in ninety nine. And then I need to add another thousand to the chipping, chipping the brush, chipping the brush.
So do we need to put some scales on a capital improvement, in a capital improvement plan, you think?
Well.
To replace those scales at some point?
The scale heads probably need to be replaced, the scales themselves is still good, but you gotta replace the electronic part of it.
The load cells?
Yeah.
Um, how much are you anticipating on the load cells and scale that?
I haven't gotten the price on, on that. I just put another two thousand on the maintenance.
I mean, your scale has going to cost you about twelve hundred bucks, uh, twelve to sixteen hundred dollars. Load cells for tractor, truck trailer scales, I mean, you're talking another twenty five hundred, three thousand bucks total.
Per each one?
No.
Total? We got more than four, I think it's, uh, be eight, it's eight or ten of them, because it's, well, eight or twelve, because it's three, it's either two or three pads there.
If each pad has one cell, so if you decide that's.
It doesn't have one on each corner, each, each.
Yeah, there's only one on the tractor trailer scales, there's only one on each end, and one in the, so it's six per set. And that scale is not, I don't think it's old, eighty.
It's tractor trailer, but he's on.
Uh, you're talking, you're talking probably seven, eight, eighty seven.
That's maintenance, that'd be a.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, you're not replacing the whole deck.
Right.
All right, what else do we have for Roger? Tim Jike? All right.
Just a.
Questions for Roger?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
The same.
How you doing?
We're gonna start, uh, register on our page twelve.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Um, so for my budget, I increased thirty one forty five a little bit, which is normally what I pay Charles out of for anything that we have to do in the office, kind of aside from elections. Um, I had decreased this a little bit last year when we hired an IT person, but Bruce has been really busy, I didn't know, you know, what his workload would be like. And with moving buildings, I thought we might need Charles for something there. Um, extra newspaper ads increased thirty six ten a little bit. That would be for, we do have to advertise in the newspaper for two weeks before my office relocates. And then we also have to advertise in the newspaper if any precincts change. Um, I did talk to Jack a little bit about hopefully consolidating some polling places and taking us from the nine that we currently have down to a lesser amount. And that would also need to be ran through the paper, so it increased that section. And fifty two ten postage is probably my biggest increase. Um, we did have a lot of postage money left over from previous registrars, and this past year with the mail-in voting increase, put a big dent in that, so we're about, down to nothing. And they've also changed legislation, so we have to prepay the postage on every return envelope that goes out for an absentee ballot. So that's gonna put our costs from sixty five cents, just mailing it out, and then increasing it by fifty cents. And there's a proposed postage increase, so that's gonna cost us a lot more, unfortunately. Um, I did take away some money on lodging and meals and seminars and tuition, just because there's nothing really going on. Um, maybe something could come up in the next year, but I still think there's a sufficient amount there. And then telecommunications, I canceled our separate Verizon bill for internet that we were using there and joined the county network, so that saved that amount.
All right, questions for Roger? Can I move to the right direction?
Trying.
So we got a huge savings in health insurance and VRS.
Yeah, I don't know any of that, sorry. Yeah, I was gonna support, yeah.
I mean, if you look at the numbers, um, the way this, these spreadsheets have worked in the past is you just carried forward the other numbers. So the seventeen thousand dollar negative you're showing really is, I mean, if you put them back in, you're positive, I don't want the number.
Yeah, the shaded part there, I just didn't know those numbers, sorry.
So, uh, no, no radical change in staffing, same part-time people, four hundred people at large, all that, this, this is the operation, capital needs this.
Um, I, I did increase the part-time by a small amount, um. We were at close to twenty three thousand, and then at the beginning of last fiscal year, when we needed to cut budgets by one percent, I took most of it out of the assistant. So I did increase that a small amount, just because there's a really good probability that we'll have three elections this coming year. And with the no excuse voting, it needs to be two of us in the office at all times. So you're looking at, you know, quite a few months where it's full-time assistant, really. Which I still split between two part-time people, but I think it's gonna cost a little bit more in budget. But no other large increases.
But I think Jack was talking about, you, are you gonna need any more equipment, do we have to replace?
Oh, no.
Voting machines or any kind of equipment?
No, and hopefully, um, with the, the precinct consolidation, you know, we've got enough equipment now for not, for ten precincts, really counting the cap, and two spares, and then when you consolidate precincts and get rid of some, that just gives us more backup equipment. Um, on the other, the next chart, there are some fees that go with the equipment that I'll explain.
So, um. The budget for FY twenty one has a significant amount of extra dollars for part-time people related to, um, the, the, why I forget the, the voting, the, uh.
No excuse, yeah.
We're, we're in half the year, you had a presidential election, and you've only spent seventy five hundred dollars, and you're asking for twenty five thousand next year. Twenty five thousand is, is seventeen percent higher than what was in your FY twenty one budget, and it's, um, you know, it's many extremely high compared to what you've spent for seven months.
Yeah, so.
Is that really a real number?
Well, so my explanation for that would be that, um, part-time helps really hard to keep, and that's what I'm having an issue with. So Debbie Nicholson left in the end of June, beginning of July last year, so there's only part-time hours for the beginning of fiscal year twenty one for Diana. And then I hired someone in August, she worked through the election and then took a full-time position. So I've really only worked two assistants for a couple of months out of the year, which has saved a lot. But it's also hard to hire an assistant who, you know, will work these hours. Like I need you three or four days a week during no excuse voting, but the rest of the time, I need to. Like I need you three or four days a week during no excuse voting, but the rest of the time I need to cut you back and I can't work you three or four days a week. So I'm really just having trouble finding the right staff member who wants this kind of schedule. But with three elections also, um, that would have no excuse voting, I mean, right now it's only been through one. So you're looking at seventy-five hundred dollars for one election where I had two workers. I'd like to go down to five to six. Nine. One's the absentee precinct, so it does count as a polling place, but.
We're gonna give your personal phone number out there, everybody.
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure they will.
Alright, alright, let's go to the next one for real soon.
You guys do have to be okay with that, though. I mean, it'll, it'll come back with y'all too.
Do you have a, uh, electoral board?
Okay, so electoral board, thirty-one forty-five is, um, heart software license and support renewal, plus the four percent projected rate increase that we seem to see every year with that. Um, put that up a little bit. The other part of that is just estimating labor for Charles for IT for the elections. Um, you know, typically every year we budget for three elections and only see two of them, except for the presidential year. This year with the census coming up, it's a little different, because they would normally postpone the June primary to August and we would just have one primary, just push back a couple months. They're saying that the census data isn't gonna be ready for that, so it means there's either gonna be a second primary in August or some type of special election early twenty-twenty-two. So I think the, um, there's a really good probability that we probably will have three elections this calendar year and use a lot of the resources here, unfortunately. Um, thirty-two-eleven is the election official pay. Really, we just, you know, are having a hard time getting election officials, their pay is really miniscule and it, we had some pretty faithful older election officials, but we're not being able to recruit any new ones or bring anybody onboard, so hoping if we pay a little bit more, that that incentive might entice them to do this job.
We're gonna stay very long, election officials.
Yeah, it, it says that you have to pay them at least seventy-five dollars a day and you need to pay mileage to and from for every person who has to come pick up equipment or take anything. So our rates were a little bit above that, we were paying like a hundred. But, um. They're kinda all over the place, some of them pay really good and some of them pay really bad. And the ones that you hear sometimes will shock you. Um, my sister actually works for the Charlottesville Department of Elections now and their election officials make like three to four hundred dollars a day, which is wild, but I mean, they, they pay them really good, but they also have huge waiting lists of people trying to do it. Um, thirty-two, thirty-three-twenty-three, the voting equipment extended warranty, um, is twelve hundred dollars every year that we pay. And then the poll pads that we purchased through the CARES Act money do have a little bit more of a warranty than what we were paying on our old laptops, but they'll be much more productive and have less errors for the election officials, so that's those two. And, um, the increase to six-zero-zero-one for office supplies, this is normally what we pay the election materials cost out of. And heart also has let us know that they're no longer giving us a thousand free ballots, which ends up costing almost four hundred dollars more per election to cover that thousand ballots. So figuring that into it and then just a little bit more for cleaning supplies and things that we might need due to elections, made that go up. And then, um, I did add a thousand dollars for the consolidation of polling places, if that's something the county does and we pursue. I don't have an exact cost on that, but I don't think, from the research that I've done, that it should cost us a ton, as long as we kind of still use the buildings that we're currently using and just minimize the number of them.
Shouldn't there also be savings by not having to pay for some of the other spaces?
Yeah, it'll, it'll save you in the long run, so each election, I mean.
Should save us on, like, all four months?
Yeah.
On rent, if you use.
Yeah.
Or like brandy o's.
Right. Yeah, so we paid one-fifty to rent each building, so when you cut a couple out, there's that. And then there's at least three election officials at each, which is over four hundred dollars there, so. I mean, the savings will far outweigh what it would cost us. Um, it is gonna upset some people, for sure. The registrars that I've talked to in other localities, similar size to us, you guys know as good as anyone, people don't like change, so when you take away the polling place they normally vote at and tell them they need to vote at this one, it's not gonna be ideal. But another thing to remember is that a third of the county voted early with me. So if we're doing that, you're already taking so much stress off of the polls. And then, I mean, it's just not necessary to have them all, I don't think. Especially one with eighty-four voters. Yeah.
Ooh, I'm gonna hear about that one.
Yeah.
I mean, you're.
And we do a lot of work, I mean, it's the same amount of work coming out of our office for the polling place with eighty-four voters versus seventeen hundred. I mean, it's still the same stuff that you send, everything has to be packed, you still need three election officials there.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
With Charles, we're still using Charles since we have Livingston? Cause it's like five thousand.
That's kind of an interesting question, cause Bruce is kind of like, oh, I'm a little bit right now. And, and we have been, actually, probably could be even using more of these, these, um, AMS. But that's probably going to, yes, the option of using either Charles or AMS to, to do things. I see that continuing.
And so on my pro.
Lord, don't you have to have special access or approval from the state to even touch those machines?
Yeah, so Charles on this one, for his labor estimate for the elections, you've gotta be a sworn election official and be under oath to do anything with the election equipment and results and the things that Charles does for us, the programming. So Bruce could do that, but it would take a lot of time and training and stuff that I don't think he has available right now. And that's something that we did talk about originally when you were hired way down the road. But I know with his workload now, that it's probably not a possibility.
But to Clay's point on thirty-two-eleven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, did you calculate the proposed FY twenty-two budget of seventeen grand on the current number of officers of elections? Or what you think will happen when you consolidate or when you get rid of a couple?
I did that right now on the current number and only because we're not allowed to make any changes to polling places until after May first. And then that'll already be in absentee voting for a June primary, as long as that happens. So that puts you not being able to make any polling place changes until after June. If there's an August primary, you have two weeks in between those two before absentee voting starts again. And then you have a couple weeks until absentee voting starts again for November. So really, the polling place consolidation can't be done until like December, January. So for this fiscal year, it would only save us on June twenty-twenty-two's primary. And, and that's just because of the way things go with the census, like we're not allowed to make any changes until after May. And then the election schedule, as long as three happen, just make it impossible. The other thing that we wanna wait on to is the redistrict, which happens after the census, so they have to redraw the lines for the House of Delegates. And if those get drawn somehow to affect Madison County, then if we consolidated polling places before that, it could put splits through precincts and that's something we would wanna avoid at all possible. Hopefully it won't affect us anyway, but just in case.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions for Roger? If you want.
Thank you.
Um, alright, we're going to the, uh, we're going to the sheriff. Candace, or somebody, did y'all get on from the sheriff's office, I assume you're calling one? Yes ma'am. Go ahead, Candace. Yeah, go ahead. You go.
Where is that? I can't see her.
You hear that, Candace?
Here. Take this microphone, MJ.
I, I can't move.
Yeah, I can't. Hold on to that.
Um, yeah, just wait for it.
Cut it back on.
So where, oh, I see, it's thirty-three-thirty. Is that the one, that's the line item you need? Or that's? Okay. We should probably check, does that check out against my schedules that I gave you guys? We should check, we, we should check that. Alright, that was my other question.
Did she say she thought the fuel was gonna double?
Yeah. What is, is that the price per gallon or we got more cars on the road? The fuel, tell us about the fuel.
I haven't heard that.
Is that a Q and on theory?
Q and on.
With that microphone on?
What's gonna happen?
Candace.
We're not anticipating vehicles moving forward? Yeah. Alright. And what about, what about, I mean, the major item that looks like it's missing at this point um, is your benefits and salaries, um, which could?
Candace, are there any changes in the number of employees, or pay rates?
Do you know that?
Or part-time hours? In your proposal, please? So, turn this on. Are there any changes in the, in the number of employees, uh, part-time hours or pay rates uh, versus what we have on the books right now?
But that's in the budget.
Yeah, but that, that's in your budget, but that's also under the next, uh, lot, or the next line item, the twenty-one-eight-hundred, correct? For that one unfilled position?
That's good.
Did you, do you have any change in part-time hours, or you wanna link on the same as that was last year?
Your microphone might not be.
I need your microphone.
Turn your microphone, MJ.
Oh, sorry. Um, Candace, do you have any change in part-time hours, either in the sheriff's office or in the court, uh, court security? Or you wanna use the same hour assumptions as you used last time? Yeah, I don't know why, okay, so it's not, so whatever, whatever, is it not in here?
Right there.
No? Okay.
It's on the screen.
Hey Candace.
Well, that, that's overtime hours, that's not part-time.
Those are overtime hours.
Oh, okay, that was my question, what?
That's OT. I assume that's overtime on that, that tab, right?
So that's overtime.
So we, we haven't talked about pay increases, um, for staff at all. Doesn't look like it's added into this in any way at this point. Is that correct, Candace? Yes ma'am, thank you.
I mean, there's never, uh, payroll increases or any kind of changes in payroll in the original budget request, I mean, there hasn't been since, you know, since, since Dan Campbell was here, that's not the way it's been done.
Sure.
And, um, I mean, those guys, the budgets, the department's heads don't have the capability of figuring that out by themselves.
Say that again? It needs to be figured out?
Yeah, I mean, they don't, they, they don't have the ability to figure it out themselves. It's always been, last year, we circulated, uh, you know, spreadsheets for people where they filled out assumptions about hours and rates and things like that. Um, we didn't do that this year, so.
Okay.
Um, alright, anybody else got any questions on the sheriff's budget? Candace, let's go to court security, please. Alright, now that works, they, and you're looking to, just as information, you have one person out and you're looking to fill that position? Yes ma'am. Alright, questions on this one?
So I, I have another question, so, um, I forget, what's the name of the deputy who works full-time court security? I can't remember. Candace? Oh yeah, that's right, okay. Is, is somebody, is there somebody else in the sheriff's department that's being allocated to court security uh, um, on, on, you know, a partial basis? Right, okay, so, but Rodney, none of Rodney Seal's hours are actually in here, is that right? I mean, you're not showing, so Rodney Seal is actually devoting part of his time to court security, but he, but he's not getting charged there, is that right?
Alright, other questions on court security or the sheriff's office? Thank you very much, Candace. Yes ma'am. Um, Ligon, you doing everybody?
Yeah.
Alright, come on up. Who would hate me with that unpleasant building special? Yeah, I'm looking at you back there. What do you got?
Okay, okay. Um, so I'll start on this page. Um, I'll just go over what's changed and I, I guess last year was a little easier, um, with the sheet. That was sent, that was a little kind of tardy and fortunately, uh, April works for us. She really helped a lot to get this, uh, in a coherent, at least we can present it today. So, what I have is one item, and I just made some staff adjustments and, um, two, for two, two staff members, and you can see the soil erosion technician, with an increase. We have that one. Um, contractual services are, that wasn't a change, that's a thousand. Training services is a thousand. Uh, telecommunications at nine hundred. I think we're having some issues with, uh, one, I think Carl's phone. I think we're having some issues with one, I think Carl's phone is with, for some reason, he has an older phone, and we need to probably maybe get a staff phone, we were thinking. This map doesn't seem to work, and the reimbursement's fifteen dollars for using a month, or using, I've just used my phone, I don't, I don't get a staff reimbursement, I think Matt, Jamie, you get a staff reimbursement?
Yeah, I get a staff and Carl's.
All right, so you need a phone, or a couple phones?
Are you talking about cell phones, or are you talking about my telephones?
Cell phones.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right, keep going.
Uh, now, four thousand dollars is for books and subscriptions, because we have to buy a new set of code books this year. Is that right, Jamie?
A whole series.
Is that a subscription-like thing, Jamie, or is that hard?
We've got a new building coming out, probably the end of summer, so we need a whole band of books.
What year is, what year is that one dated back to?
It's gonna be twenty-eighteen, state building book.
How many books is that?
Books from reference manuals. Ten to fifteen.
No, I just, all right, keep going, Ligon.
The last one is motor vehicle, I think Matt's truck that he uses is probably on its, close to its last leg. You know, this is something that we probably could make another year, we kinda want to put on your radar if anything.
Wouldn't, doesn't Matt need to go roll over into Capitol, so I, I mean, he does, we need to roll that Capitol, but that's what we're doing.
Okay, so.
But no, it's worth bringing up.
Right, I just, FYI, I do think we have a little more time on it, but just as a FYI, everything else, when we go through, the other changes really aren't that many. If you go to, I guess it's the zoning.
All right, go to, all right, let's go down, let's go down to the list. You, are we good on Building Official?
Yeah, we're good on Building Official.
Did Jerry Carpenter pay you to put your vehicle in there? Uh, Jerry can only have so many vehicles.
I got you.
Um, all right, go to, anybody got anything on Building Official?
So why, there's all these blank lines for like materials and supplies, office supplies, don't have anything budgeted for them.
I guess we just need to bring those over.
So we need to do that, and we need to pull the vehicle out and make sure it goes over to Capitol?
Right.
There you go. Um, anybody else on Building Official? Let's go to Virginia Building Permit, three fifty-five.
No, no change there. So that should be nine forty.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred, excuse me, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And we, and then we go to, this one here is planning commission, no, no change to planning commission.
Good.
This is the sheet that I sent yesterday. Which one are we at now?
On eighty-one, one oh one now.
Yeah, page nine thirty-six.
Okay, so the, the only one here, we, we still need to add those items. This is zoning and planning?
Yeah, zoning and planning.
So we need to add, I guess, move those, carry those items over. Well, some of, well, some of them I'm not gonna budget anything for. It looks like there's advertising, we're, we're good with the twenty-five hundred. We're good at advertising.
The addition to those signs, we're gonna kick that up?
Right. So we're using numbers here, we'll just carry those.
No, when, when you say you're good on advertising, Ligon, you bought those signs that the planning commission wanted to put for those cases, that you don't need an increase on those?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we're good, the only thing here, I will, this is on salaries. We have Matt April, that I have requested, could get a potential raise. I benefited obviously from the salary study, and I'm very appreciative of that personally. You know, with, with April, just not to lead individual cases, but we, we quite frankly wouldn't have an office without April. I think that would be.
Oh, no, she's another one on that list that brings just one to the table.
Yeah.
It's like a wealth of information.
She did all this yesterday in two hours, I was, I was lost.
Right, go.
If it's not my money, I'm poor at counting it. So I, I just wanna make that, that kinda clear, but I understand, you know, that we're, these are always tough decisions, but I, I do wanna just point out that we're, we're getting a lot out of, out of her, an awful lot. Other than that, that will really be the only changes that we would, we would see next year, well, just out of, just to let you know, on revenues, twenty nineteen building permits, we just ran a query before we came in here, for the calendar year twenty nineteen, we're at a hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars in revenues. This year, calendar year, one one, just for twenty twenty calendar year, one, a little over one eighty-three. Now, I believe that we, we weren't including zoning permits in twenty nineteen year, so there's probably a little, just, just, twenty nineteen probably should be a little higher than one sixty. But you can see, we've had a uptick in revenue, it's just building permits, subdivision fees, and all those things on here, I just wanna let you know. So basically, we have a, you know, just a kind of overview of, you know, Mr. Ailer, Matt's salary, phone, books, and April, that, that would be the, with, and with the vehicle being something that we, we just wanna put on your radar, it could be done in another year.
Anybody have questions for Ligon on any of this stuff?
Yeah. That's right.
More desiring appeals since they have to meet from our off to now. They're not asking for anything?
Uh, I, no, we're, we're okay with that.
Good. Anybody got anything? I mean, if I understand it correctly, it looks like his, his department is paying for itself, huh? Is that? Yeah. And I am hearing a lot of good stuff from a lot of different people, so thank you. Guy, guy, I told, I told, this guy called me the other day, says, I've been working with my banks for a long time, really need to get these building permits going. I said, how long has it been in the office? He said, oh, I went in there, they were very nice, but they said it could take up fourteen days, and that's kinda standard. Says, I've got some insurance bill that are thirty to sixty days out, I don't know, that sucks for you. Um, and called me the next day, he says, I got my building permit. I go, what do you mean? He says, yeah, April called and said it was ready. Um, I mean, that's just, there's nobody, I, I can't, I don't have anybody else in the state that's doing it as fast and well, I mean, and you're not cutting corners or anything, it's just awesome. Probably should be hearing.
I, everyone's done a great job, Carl, Jamie, April, you know, Matt, everyone does a good job, and, you know, when I started a year and a half ago, it was, it was, it was, it was a, it was a lot of things piled up, and it was pretty, I was pretty confused at how things got in and out of the door, well, they really didn't get in and out of the door very quick, but, you know, I'll say, you know, far as our office goes, April's kind of the quarterback, and she sort of, everything sort of pivots off her and to everyone else, so she, she's really, she's pretty special at what she does, so it's a pretty good job.
No, but you're worth it, worth committing you as well, what you're doing with the planning commission was really great, going out on these sites and all the background information makes, makes our job super easy, and it should pay for the planning commission, my credit also, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else got anything for Ligon or Jamie Wokes? Thank you, you're welcome, too, yeah, what do you got?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna follow what Ligon had to say, with our employees, Matt and April, top-notch employees, they need some compensation, I mean, they are making everything happen. Matt's a wealth of knowledge, doing multiple jobs, he's getting ready to get a new certification to help out, plan review. It's another task to be taken off, so he's doing a lot. I just wanna get that out there.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, he said he's in charge of where there's land, so I mean, I, I.
I don't know who that was.
It's Greg K, come on up here and tell us about how you wanna be shelter manager again. Animal control, seventy-seven. All right.
Who's was that?
Oh, I do not wanna be shelter manager. So this budget is pretty straightforward now, with the transition of the shelter and animal control over, uh, separation of the two departments. So first, I did increase overtime, just tried to compensate that due to the salary adjustments. It took place in November, just to help cover the expenditure. And you will see some things have been taken out, like the animal shelter assistance, but don't get your hopes up, that's in the shelter, animal shelters budget. Next is, you'll notice that we did increase dues, that's to cover our BACA membership, which is the Virginia Animal Control Association. This helps both of us get our training and keep our continuing credits renewed, which is required by the state, and also includes state books that we can keep up on, new laws and such. I did decrease fuel, this is because a shelter van now is in the animal shelters budget, not in animal controls budget. Also decreased office furniture, equipment as well. And I did ask for a percentage increase for salaries, again, just for yearly adjustment for both, you know, control offices. No really major improvements, everything's pretty much staying the same. Both of the animal control vehicles are pretty much fairly new, running, so I don't see us replacing those anytime soon. There is some ideas that we would like to run by the board and see where, run a few minutes early, so hopefully after we finish our budget, Meg and I would like to discuss some ideas with you. Just major improvements and stuff to the shelf, that doesn't taint to the, to the budget.
Is it topping stuff?
Yes.
All right. All right.
Pretty simple.
Anybody got anything regarding budget for the animal shelter or animal control? Let's see, I guess the, for, the thirty-five, one oh two, the animal shelter, there's a fourteen thousand dollar increase in vet bills, huh?
That's the animal.
Animal shelter, we're on some animal control, I'm sorry, I really wanted to ask for it with the animal shelter, but I don't know if you like. Everybody get on control, yeah, let's move to shelter, Megan, come on up.
I unfortunately won't be able to decrease as much as Greg. But, so if we do start at that fourteen thousand increase, so this figure was a little difficult to calculate because of the animal intakes during the pandemic. Uh, so I did use the twenty-twenty budget, and what we've used so far this year as well, it's a little mixture. So our traffic has increased, so I'm accounting for it, I mean, decreased, sorry, so I'm accounting for it to increase due to the vaccine when the pandemic slows, hopefully, within the next year, peak kitten season in the spring, and additional requirements set forth by the state that the shelter and the veterinarian has to follow, so those are the reasons for increase on the any, any questions on that one? I know that one's the.
Yeah, so I was wondering where all the fallout from that year would end up costing, and this is primarily where it is, besides the separate animal control and.
Yes, there's additional paperwork that the state definitely requires, I think Greg reported this six months or a year ago, that we, this is, as you said, a lot.
More intelligent.
All right, what are the questions on the shelter?
How did you come up with fifty-eight thousand dollars for medical expenses? This seems.
Um, so we based it off of previous years, and then off of last year, so we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna decrease based off of the past year, because our traffic has decreased due to the pandemic, and we're expecting it to increase within the coming year due to the vaccine, and hopefully the pandemic's slowing.
Yeah, I thought historical FY twenty was around twenty-five thousand. So to go, FY twenty-one is not a good comparative year to COVID.
All right.
But, um, to go from twenty-five in FY twenty to fifty-eight in FY twenty-two, you're, you're, really, that's a, that's a big increase.
We did, we did do this together, I mean, do you have any input on?
We're paying a lot more, you know, the vet expenses than we were.
Can you price that out by like number of pets, you know, number of animals per month?
I mean, it's hard to calculate because of the pandemic, I mean, it could go up or go down. So we just try to come in between, we didn't wanna do a low enough number and then not have a cost to pay for that.
I mean, where you're at though, I mean, you're, you're a date being sixty-nine, fifty-nine, I mean, I, I know y'all, you got this kitten season thing coming up, um, which I'm sure will be expensive, so even if you double it, I mean, you're jumping to thirty-two, really ain't gonna grow that much, I mean, if we were to pull that back to, let's just say fifty, would that be?
Yeah.
Yeah, something that we could try.
I mean, which, I'm hoping that y'all don't spend that much.
This is something we were really unsure of, because of traffic and the increase in event bills, so we weren't really sure where to.
You haven't had the flood season of a normal year, right, with the new set of requirements? So it probably is really hard to predict.
Yeah.
And we were, uh, there was an email sent out, vaccines are only going up again this year. So we, we will have to see that increase on our end, because the vet will actually have to charge more with this services.
Let's see, I mean, we've identified it as an issue, consumer ops goes with it when it pertains to the administrative recommendation on the budget, and we can kinda go from there. Does that make sense or not? Sort of, probably not, I mean, I might bring it down to, I mean, I, I.
Well, we could put it over in contingency in your market and say, hey.
There you go, that's better off. Could we do something like that, move it over into contingency? Oh, that is, that is, everybody hear that comment? That's not bad, right? All right, um, questions for animal shelter?
So, I have a couple, um, the complete medical expenses I had to increase, I just hired a new employee, and then myself, we have to get the rabies vaccine, so that will cost times two. I have decreased telecommunications based on what we spent before, cleaning and janitorial, the community's been really generous during COVID and the holiday season, so we've gotten a lot of donations. In regards to that, equipment and other, I was also able to decrease by two hundred, and then as far as yearly increases for employees, the two that we have now have stuck with us. So due to their loyalty and years of service and the quality of work that they provide. As far as myself, it's consistently a full-time workload, I've completed all my certifications within two months of hiring. As far as myself, it's consistently a full-time workload. I've completed all my certifications within two months of hire and I'm fully trained.
So Megan, what, what sort of donations can the community make that reduces your budget here? Are you talking what?
So a lot of people have donated like, like Clark's wipes or extra things that they have, I guess, that get shipped to their house and they, they just have extra, so they give them to us. And then over the holiday season, we saw more donations.
Always dog food and things like that?
Yeah. As far as dog food, I mean, we haven't had to buy any, which is great, so.
All right. Other questions? All right. Let's deal with the topic. What? No, I understood. They've got some ideas. Probably wants flaws or something. They already got some ideas.
We just want these, we'd be great. We just want to update the board and some of the ideas that we're looking into. We've been talking back and forth with Jerry Park under full wow. Play, we looked into this.
Yeah, we wanted to do it back there in that slop area.
Well, now we moved.
Thinking about putting in a dog park through the ridge and we are back through the ridge right below the silo. There's like a poly bulked port. So we looked into putting that in.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to be good for the community.
And next, we also like to do like a screen reader program again, all the edge of the citizens advice. Maybe depends on when the toppings committee can get together, even if we offer again, spring or fall in those peak seasons.
What, what, what is the peak cat season or whatever?
Either spring or fall.
What month does it start? Letters to cats in like March or?
Yeah, like March.
Topping communities get together, probably at least one to have that problem. All right. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I'm interested in some type of data management because we're still doing everything by paper right now. This would save us on office supplies, so we could bring that down in the budget in the future. So that's something that potentially come out of topping. We have a broken cat cage that we'd like to replace. That's acquired normal wear and tear throughout the years. And then Greg and I would like to paint.
Different color.
And brown.
That's just, we just want to learn about that.
All you people know what a cat condo is? I mean, I, I, what?
It ought to be really nice. It sounds nice. It ought to be a really good one.
Yeah, it's all stainless steel. It's, and they're very expensive. So it's a double cage, lower, upper, and then they can actually do in with like under area. It's like just another little section. Close it off. If you've ever been to PetSmart, it's pretty much the exact same thing, but they are very expensive and it's something that's new. And I know you're looking at forty-seven hundred, but.
You ever do a dog condo?
The easy one on this, though, is the really easy one, is that span. I mean, that, that seems like something that we probably take exceeding much interest in, think about doing pretty rapidly. The other one on your pet point, I assume that's the software?
It is one software. I don't know which one is the best yet. I'm still kind of exploring that.
I would, I would assume you'll talk to MJ in Livingston and see if you all can come up with something. Yes, ma'am.
Like one, two things I want to emphasize. These guys don't need a piece of like general ledger software. They need what's called point of sale. They need point of sale software and they need integration to their office. So like at the point where they start to do that, we really need to get that fine tuned. And I'm sure Sherry Becker would be willing to say kind of, we left that out there when we talked to them originally. I'm just telling you, it needs to, it needs to fit together.
I think what Megan's talking about is more inventory and records. Yeah.
I think that, I think that you'll find that animal shelter software, it's, it's, it's not, it's just like our, your pieces of, it does a lot of different things. So when you, when you, you don't want one piece of so, it'll be back to where we are right now. You have one piece of software that does this and one piece of software that does.
Talk to, talk to these people that know about software. Didn't bring up laser fish, which is different than regular meetings. See if you can figure out one. Thank you all. Thank you, Brian. Martin's Communication Center.
Afternoon. I've got a couple of things. We'll talk about a couple of different areas. Went up in one new big item. All right. So the, the big one is the three-three-two-three budget line, which is kind of my catch-all for maintenance. One big thing that I just realized we need to do, hasn't been done in a while after talking to Radar since retired twenty eighteen, is the tower maintenance on that tower at ECC. I called around to two tower companies. I'm still waiting to get a quote on one, but the one fish in my papers here, I apologize. The one tower company quoted me six grand. So I went ahead and put eight in that budget line. The other part of that budget line was the rev core, which is our recorder. The maintenance came due off a grant for that, so that's another six thousand. So that line went up roughly, I put in eleven thousand because I took off some things that I generally don't use. I hope that doesn't come back to bite me. But that line's got a lot of, it's got three generators in it, the ECC generator and both repeater building generators. Those things are getting some age on them. Now with the radio project, we are scheduled for replacement of those generators to a bigger generator, a commercial generator. Right now they're household generators at the repeater sites. They do the job. They're, they're household and then they're commercially built. So those, those things in there, that's the big line that went up the most. The other one is fifty-four fifty-one, which is tower leases. And I'm including in my packet a projection out to twenty, twenty-three-one. All the way out to fiscal year thirty-one, actually. So there's a, a schedule in there of payments for leases per annual. The leases right now are for Hughes River tentatively and for Beautiful Run. Beautiful Run starting out at twenty-two hundred a month and raises substantially on each anniversary of each year, which that, we're scheduled to start paying that on March one. And then the other Hughes River will be sixteen hundred dollars a month. And that will raise roughly, we'll rate it one percent per year. So those, those projections are there to help us make decisions from here on out on the budget. That, that type of thing is, is going to be increasingly, we can go back and look at it in years to come to find some better solutions, especially the big.
But there, on those towers, there may be some revenue recovering.
Absolutely, absolutely. Actually had a conversation with VOF this morning. I reached out to AT&T FirstNet about the Hughes River site. Because there's nothing there. I'm scheduled to have a meeting with their East Coast people, I hope, within a month. To do that, the one big problem with that is whoever goes on that tower is going to have to run five or two of them. Now, fiber's on two thirty-one, but you're going to have to run it up through the VOF easily, which is not an easy deal as I'm buying the app. So I talked to those folks this morning about that, trying to get language in the leases now and make that easy when that time comes. So it will have to be buried, but fiber's buried anyway. Very seldom fiber, fiber above ground unless you're on Main Street maps. So it's, it should be an easy deal there.
There's, there's no way to use the electric line. It's already buried going.
My plan is because REC has the power line up to the transformer on the gentleman's house that's already there. Fish that from there, run to another transformer up the hill. Use that, use that transformer as a parallel transformer rather than.
Yeah, just got to get permission.
Exactly. Rappahanna Power would have to do all of that. And that's, that's stuff that is built into the Motorola agreement. You know, we've got money built into that contract to do those things.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what is in the grant expenditure line?
The ten thousand dollars, that is a, that's a shot in the dark. It is what that is. If we get this AFG grant, the price on fire and rescue radios in this county is right at seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. That's what we put on the grant. If we get all of that, we're going to be, we're going to pay that upfront, but we'll get all of it with ten percent back. So roughly seventy-nine hundred. If we get the grant, we're going to have to write the, write the check for the big number and then be reimbursed.
So when we get it.
So what's that grant expenditure for? What's in that ten thousand dollars?
That's, that's a ten percent. And that may have been appropriate.
That's a ten percent on the, on the radio, public safety radio system.
If we get that AFG grant, yes, ma'am.
Ten percent local share.
Right. And I'm, I'm going to pursue another grant. I'm going to go talk about that here in a minute on the capital side through Vita or BDM now to pay for something else. And we may.
Actually, if that's a portion of a radio cost, that belongs in the capital projects fund and not.
So essentially pull, pull the ten out of that or they're putting it in the cap?
One of the reasons is, is, you know, if you pay, you pay eight hundred thousand dollars for it, you put it all in one place.
Absolutely.
It's part of your operating budget.
Well, while we're, while we're discussing that, would it be beneficial to us to make a whole nother account for this instead of?
You mean like a thirty-one, four oh two?
Right, like a four oh three.
I, I prefer, so the way grants were specifically recorded in the county was all of the expenditures were lumped in a line item called grant expenditures. What I've been doing for grants is opening new, uh, new departments for grants. So that the natural classification of the money is actually moving in the general under. And that's really, actually, that's according to the APHR accounts that I believe we should do. So, yeah, I would prefer to not ever do that.
Okay. Sorry, but, okay.
I purposely got our county away from.
Whatever I can do to make it like these.
What's next? We have a question on this one.
I, I do have a few more things. There's some fluctuations, some small fluctuations in some of the other lines. When I gave the one percent back last year, I padded some of those numbers back and I took, I left some up. Just because in a year I'm going to be pushing the bullet a little bit on this. The other, I did have a personnel. I wanted to, I asked this last year and because of whatever reason, we couldn't do it. So I'm requesting again is to add another position to my staff. The all-in cost for that is forty-eight thousand, eight thirty-two oh six, plus whatever insurance they choose, whatever, whatever that individual comes in, different steps on that. It's getting increasingly harder, especially with COVID. We've been extremely lucky that we haven't gotten more than we have. I, I work shift. I work the shift Wednesday night, a half a shift. That's, I'm not, I'm not complaining in any way, shape, form, but when I do that, it takes me away from, from a lot of really big projects. And I just, I don't want to do that because I don't want to drop anything.
You sound good on the radio, though.
I appreciate that. That's fun. The big, the big thing is, is with turnover, right now I'm still short one. I interviewed on Monday, I'm going to interview another one first part of the week. And if those folks stay, that's fine and dandy, but the turnover, when we're getting down one and people get sick from vacation, right now I have a huge vacation liability. I've got several people over three hundred hours. And that's not, you know, that's, that causes a burnout. It causes a lot of different things when folks can't take their time off. And I'm trying, now that I am closer to being close to staff, to let people take two weeks at a time, start getting those numbers down a little bit. But at the same time, it's not going to last forever.
Are we, are we accruing less files of additional staff? I mean, Brian, Brian, Brian's got one. I think MJ's probably got one. Somebody else is looking for some people. I think who else? Somebody else is looking for some more people. We just need to add those and we can deal with that new floor.
The plan this year is to go through the things for your, your staff. Effectively, but we're doing the budget for that. Everything else will be broken down in terms of
And that's something else. Right now. Right now, the way my schedule works, every two weeks, each dispatcher is earning eight hours of overtime, across the board guaranteed. Now, I'm taking four hours that put into comp time because the following week they're working thirty-six hours. So that I don't have to burn as much overtime and it creates a break, so that people aren't getting burned out. So I'll be able to eliminate that potentially.
Just whatever you can do. In fact, if you're going to stay at the hundred percent, flying cover abilities and that. And once you get to a point with massive people, it's not really costing more to have that extra person. You have to budget for it and all that kind of stuff, but in the smoke filters, it could be really bad and more. And for the price you're setting, it's, it's been a lot more.
And the overtime this year that we spent today probably isn't as accurate as it would be because we're rather myself both have covered a tremendous amount of overtime. Rather more so than I. So it's, it's making that, it's fluxing that number. And I'm also expecting a retirement this year of a very high ranking person.
So what level of talent do you need? A dispatcher?
Yes, sir.
And they are hourly or they sell or they are hourly?
Okay, yeah.
They're, they're not. Right. I don't see, I think Brian would become a dust if this is something that he feels is pretty, pretty important. And he made a fairly good justification. Ops comments about the balance out on overtime is exactly right. So I mean, Brad, what else you got for us, Brian?
Uh, one last piece of good news. I put in for the grant reimbursement for next generation nine-on-one last week. It's a hundred ninety-nine thousand. We should be getting that back within the next two weeks, I'm hoping. BDM seems to be catching up with that pretty well right now.
Yes.
Right now, what, your budget for FY twenty-one, this doesn't have nine full-time employees?
It has twelve plus myself. It's okay.
Okay, so what you're asking for next year is thirteen?
Correct. Plus myself.
And how many, how many full-time employees do you have right now?
I have twelve full-time plus myself right now. I don't have a part-time budget.
So other positions still?
Every, I have eleven right now. Eleven dispatchers plus myself. I have one vacancy right now.
How many vacancies have you run this year? Most of two to three?
I've, I've been one short the entire year. I've had as many as three.
Very good. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Mr. Jarvis, come on up and talk to us. How you doing, Brett?
Hello, Charlie. How are you?
It's not on page eight thousand three hundred and five, eight thousand three five hundred. They're in order, so you scroll down. Thirteen seventy-seven, yes.
Well, that's what you need. That's the overview of this letter. It overuse all of our operating dollars are pretty much level funding. There's no increases in office supplies or professional development. Our increases are basically only on salaries. Extension agent salaries are anticipated, a two percent increase for the general assembly. And there's a forty cent per hour increase for our part-time administrative staff and program technician, four-H program technician, that's Missy Dillon. So that would be the only locations where we have any increases in the extension budget for this year. I'll be glad to answer any questions. What I brought with me, as I always do, a little bit of a program report. I will sit this on the back table. Right in the distributor, you can pick them up. One is our ROI, return on investment, what you invest into extension and what you get in return for that, since we get pots of money from different locations, being grants, federal money and state money. And then your allocation's built into this to show what investment you get for your dollar invested in local extension program. The impact statement is, we do a program a year because we do so many programs, just giving you a shotgun list of things that we do. That kind of dilutes the impact of the program. So we've gone to giving you one good program. So we've gone to giving you one good program impact a year. This year we focused on forestry, Adam Downing. Generation Next is a forestry landowner program that started, it was, um, Adam actually established that program in Madison as a test run, and it went statewide. And it's one of the most, uh, successful, uh, land transition cessation, uh, sensa- uh, successional programs in the state of Virginia for forestry landowners. So now we're saving, um, these landowners, starting in Madison, when, um, heirs die to the farm, they're not losing it to excessive taxes, there's no debate on who owns the land. We're prepping the, the primary landowners on that transition. And it's been coined and registered as Generation Next. And it is focused on, um, forest landowners. I'll leave that back with you. We have local impacts here, and we actually show what the state impacts as we expanded that program to the state. And it was well attended, by the way. Uh, the state impact, what Adam started here as an agent in Madison County has statewide effects, not just local effects. Uh, and then we have some local testimonials from Jim Ballard, who's one of these participants in the program that actually, uh, participated and used this service that Adam provides to, uh, get his land in a successional, uh, planning, uh, uh, way, so he would be able to transfer it to his heirs with a lot of, without a lot of taxes. So I just wanna highlight that program. I'll leave these on the back table. You can pick them up if you're interested in looking at them, but I'm open to questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jarvis? Please.
So what's your net increase, your net increase in ask from last, last year?
Um, actually, when I did it out, it's probably about a two and a half percent increase from last year roughly.
Do you know the dollars?
I don't know the dollars off the top of my head.
Yes.
Uh, I might actually know the dollars, hold on a minute. No, I don't, I didn't bring that report with me.
Yes, Jarvis tells us about, uh, the, the program that they're doing down in Downing and forestry. Uh, I think what John shared just a couple minutes ago, uh, about what we're gonna do this upcoming week. Jarvis is shop kind of facilitating that. And then also, something not a lot of people know, is Jarvis also reached out to Farm Bureau members and farmers in the community and trying to coordinate that vaccination side of things, which is also, um, he brings a lot to the table.
We're engaging a senior center as well, Shirley Workman, right now. Um, we're getting ready to go to churches and let churches start circulating that. Our focus, I mean, John's probably already told you a lot of this. Uh, we don't want anyone to hide from a vaccine. So if you're sixty-five years of older, uh, the churches can get those, senior centers can get those. And of course, unfortunately, the aging farmer, farming population, we can get those as well. So, uh, hopefully we'll canvass everyone and, and we will be able to spread the word to get that target group as quickly as possible.
Thank you, that's still a very good job, so.
Mm-mm, yes, ma'am.
So, Mina, I don't think John shared you. Really a significant number of requests about vaccines through the website? Do you, do you, you're up, do you wanna get them?
I do, I need every one of them.
Okay, so who, Katie?
Send to Katie or Missy. Alright. I really, at this point, need an email or a phone number, so you can glean that from the thing. Uh, a lot of times they'll give you their health history in the process of leaving you the message. But we don't need a health history, all we need to know is your age. If you meet the age requirements, I don't need to have your health history, I can give you a shot.
I don't know, I find that, maybe it's music in some cases.
Um. It has three hundred and fifty to put in the computer in three days.
Thank you for what you're doing and thanks for the budget, well.
Yep, have a good day.
All right, Mr. Daniels, the commish, um, tell us about. Yes, there we go, um. Let's start with, let's start with Commissioner Revenue Budget. Well, nothing other than Brian, I, I can hardly wait till next year when I see all these numbers fall out of bed because we've got this nice new system that's not gonna require near as much labor. Okay. Uh, no. That should be capital budget stuff. It's either, it's either that or we get Roger in there to build them for you. Yes. Where? What else you got, Brian?
I have a question right now.
Please.
Um, I'm sorry, turn my. So.
Box costs right now. The, isn't that what, isn't that the, the, um, records management system you use right now, is that called Box? Where's that?
Thirty-one, forty-five.
So do you, do you think that that will go down next year at all when you start using Laserfish?
Anybody else have questions for Brian on Commissioner Revenue? Brian, let's proceed. Now, you're flat, keep going. Personal property. Yep. Good. Um, assessor? Everybody good on there? Go, go GIS, Brian. And revenue refund, please. Anybody got any questions?
No, sir.
No questions. Um, I see you've got in your notes talking about a server, the AS four hundred server. Very good. Um, anything else, Brian, you wanna convey? Anybody got any questions for Mr. Daniels? Mr. Daniels, thank you very much. Ms. Lauk? Yes, ma'am. Circuit Court, page thirteen.
So, um, we finally have been approved to do juries. So, uh, I anticipate our first, we'll start, I think March fifteenth, sixteen, something like that. Um, but since we haven't had any juries in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two is book solid. Um, I've actually been telling attorneys that call right now, when they ask me when to send dates, twenty twenty-two. Don't send any dates for twenty twenty-one, we can't work you in. Um, so I did put, uh, I added a good little bit of extra into the jury part of it. We have one jury scheduled that is a month long, it's four weeks long. That's gonna take a big chunk of our money. And then we've just got two, one and two-day juries through, uh, July first through, um, end of June. Um, I'm hoping a couple of them will get canceled and they'll settle and we won't have them. Um, but, you know, I'm just anticipating that that. And so with that, I added, um, some extra to the, um, postal services. And part of that jury money also is, um, having the Supreme Court send out our original questionnaires. Um, so I usually have them send out eighteen hundred, um, but, um, I'm gonna bump that up. So that, that means postage, that means, you know, that many more. Um, but everything else, I think, I, I did, um, ask for some office furniture. The judge asked that the credenza behind him be replaced. It, the doors totally broke off of us. His furniture, actually, I mean, we bought some furniture last year for him, a new desk. That desk was from nineteen seventy-seven, it was given to Judge Lloyd Solenberger. Um, so it really isn't compatible for computers, that kind of thing right now. So we did replace that out of last year's budget. Um, but the credenza behind him, he, he does put a lot of files and stuff back there, but the whole door's broken up. So, um, and I, I included, just to show you what we were looking at, it matches the desk that he has.
It looks like fine credenza, and is he happy with it?
Yeah.
Hot dog, very good. Um, alright, let's go, anybody got anything on that one? Let's go to clerk for the circuit court, Ms. Lauk.
I don't know that I, I really increased a whole lot. Um, you know, a couple hundred dollars in postal, we're mailing out the concealed handgun permits instead of having people come in the office. You know, that's added a little bit to us. Um, last year my bank services charges, which is for the credit cards, we started taking credit cards, that was way, oh, less than what I anticipated, so I did, um, bump that down. But you get reimbursed, I, I charge a four percent fee, uh, because the credit card company charges me. Um, so the leftover, or for what I charge and what the bank service fees, I'm, I'm reimbursing to you all out of that. Same with copy machine, that gets reimbursed out of our copy. So really a huge, I mean, my budget looks like it's.
You're, you're sixteen hundred dollars up.
Yeah, I mean, I, now I did not include, you know, the off constitutional, I, I did include salaries.
Yeah, I know, but even, I mean, when you run your additions and subtractions, I mean, that's where you're at. There is the, the caveat at the bottom that says that you've got a part-time person that's, you would like to go to full-time.
And I asked for her last year, if y'all remember, she's, she's a hard worker, she picks up paths, but she needs full-time work. And I asked last year, but she was one of the four or five that got cut, and I wasn't allowed to have her full-time. So I'm coming again, hat in hand, asking for her to be full-time.
Ops is putting together a list, um, put her on the list.
Yeah, and I, I, not all of her salary, because MJ and I had talked about this, um, I pay for part of her salary out of my secure remote access. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm, I would like to use that secure remote access to pay to have the Platts, um, digitized and so that that's available on secure remote access. But I, I do have some money, and if it would help get her on full-time, I'm still willing, willing to give up that money and send that to the county just to try to get her on full-time.
Yeah, Lita, for the last several years, has written, at the end of the year, she writes a check to the county out of her own accounts to help pay for her staff, the staffers.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, she's, um, you know, and, and besides the fact that the office needs her. And I mean, I think I, I showed you all, we went up, um, four hundred D's this year in the middle of a pandemic. That's, that's quite a bit. And when you look at what we took in, uh, between the state and the county, and that's not including my secure remote access money or any of that that doesn't go to the state or the county, one point one million is what we took in. So we've been busy, we did seven hundred and some concealed handguns. Uh, we were down a little bit on the criminal and civil side of it. But when you start working the, those concealed handgun permits, it takes every bit of work as if it were, uh, a regular divorce case or something like that. The marriage license, it wasn't so much that we did that many more this year, but they, during a pandemic, for some reason, they came to Madison. We had people from Richmond, Fairfax, Glenn Allen come to Madison to get there because they couldn't wait to get it in Fairfax or wherever they needed it. So even though, um, I'm thinking, I'm looking at my numbers and looking at what we took in and what we, um, the work that we did during a pandemic, when I said we were busy, we were busy.
And, and all the different precautions you've put in place for COVID and keeping the courts going. And I mean, gotta give a lot of credit to Ms. Lauk on this.
And I'm just not the most technology person in the world, this wall has more technol- to trying to get all that. It was like getting. To trying to get all that, it was like getting that polycom system and everything set up. So I had to, while I was doing stuff like that, I really had to rely on my deputies to do some of the other stuff for me.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Lauk? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, let's take, let's take, let's take ten minutes, and then we can go into our next set of presentations. I'll work real quick.
Oh, good grief. Oh, good, Kirk. No, I had not.
A bunch of charmer.
I don't have any more with me, I mean, if you really need that, I could go back to the office and get some.
So this is Brian?
This is Stephanie, because she's in her office. Yeah, check the treasures off, because they might have, they have a lot of, they have a stash of stuff in there.
So I guess, Grace, you've seen a new sign up.
What sign?
You can't put it in the paper. Please don't put it in the paper.
Kevin, please don't put it in the paper, please.
You'll see, you'll understand what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so when I looked by, they were...
I guess they made a decision. They always pick it. Have a lot of implants, or put people's bodies. They can do what they can't do. I hate what that says about what they've decided about their markets, you know? For whatever reason, I don't, that piece of town, I, yeah. They're parts of 29, my time last been in 29, parts of here I don't see in the county.
Clay and I both go to the town council meetings, and that's, it's coming Thursday, people have called me.
I'm kind of going up to the church. I guess the reason I'm going there is because the church, we haven't had a live service since last March. We, everything's in.
No, that's not.
Not for everybody.
Two or three things, I haven't got any answers on any of them. That's the money we were talking about, the sidewalk.
There are, he does it, he does it, so we've got two churches in our charge, one of them. Even ask it for money, all money made in one way.
So, so we have a skyline, where I was up there. Mesa wants to sell their old office next to us and Barbara's House behind us. They've given us, they are giving us personal views. So, as I look at it, since I was on the planning commission, and Simon's like, Barbara's House is one thing, because a lot of people may not have cars, but if we turn it into affordable housing type apartment building, we need X number of parking spots. So I looked at the judge, and I said, you guys need some advice. Are there enough spots up there to do what, to change the use? No. You know, I mean, we went to school together, Charles Parton, he was a teacher. You know, I went out with William Payne to my sister and boyfriend. We had no mom, it's like, man. Well, see, I'm, because we would have a list of all the businesses in the county.
I don't know if they're that good at collecting themselves.
Okay, that, and the other reason is for consumer protection. People coming in doing work for you and now.
But people aren't really knocking down the rest of the industry with it. They are not.
We have signs like this up on the building.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
We do too, at Skyline, we got real good at that. We're on Comcast. We've got a cute little town.
Could be killer.
Yeah. I mean, the courthouse and the World Building and Beasley Park, all that.
Coffee shop would be good if everyone came to the kitchen.
Clay stopped asking about that.
We've been working on that building for a while.
Working on park.
Well, that's the problem, there's really no park.
I know.
I have two spaces behind.
Him parked behind Montague Miller and behind the church.
Because there's a little, there's a house, and I don't know what bulletproof doesn't, but there will be drugs like lying in. You've got to run, I don't know. So there's a cute little, when did you buy?
I brought three, three revolution. That's like the most impressive. There's a lot more, they were part of that family. But there's lots of cute little stores.
And all businesses are like, yeah.
How many people live in the town? How much they live.
It's much newer than it was when I grew up. All the apple.
That'll be good.
Oh, there you go. Excited when you were in Madison. How like when you were there? I think he has some.
No, I, I'm really, I knew.
Actually, if I, if I had a ton, I used to have a ton of apartment, still have a ton. To be able to have what I need to do, it has a lot of fun to help. There's a lot of what happens.
It would be cute.
Why are we talking about sidewalks?
If you could make downtown Madison a nice viable.
I always, I think, yeah, that's right. I always thought the funniest thing. Do you remember when Dan Painter came in here and started telling us he wanted to put, and he said, and we're sitting here, he says, he says, he says, "Just get a bulldozer and push," and then they pour concrete, that's it, that's all they do. And no studies or anything, no, we don't do that anymore. I don't think that's right. Crazy. Yeah, oh, yeah, standing on a bulldozer pushing a bath through the cemetery. You dang right. Yeah, you know about that, don't you?
It was like a whole bunch of it.
Well, Gupta also is massive.
My house is not from Gupta, mine is from another guy, you know, these same two people that...
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, exactly. Bill and Harris. All right, Clarissa? Yes, ma'am? Are you, are you ready?
Tommy is at home. He is a black German shepherd. All right, thank you. I'll still tell you that he's a, he's a black German shepherd. And he's a lot. That's okay. This, our budget request this year is essentially, it is, number-wise, it has increased. Most of that is because we have a new employee. And so there are just more money involved. Newspaper, that sort of thing. We also have, for the capital, we have a case management system selected. I think we've sent the deposit, that won't be implemented until August. So that's the capital out, not a good accounting. So I don't know if it's appropriately called a carryover or what, but that will still be around. And then any additional money that's required for that project will come out of the current fiscal year budget. Y'all have any questions about it?
Anybody have any questions for Clarissa? I mean, it looks like you only got, what, a 7% increase in your budget this year, is that how it works out?
I think it's like $4,000 more, whatever that is.
I don't really know.
It's a little less than 4,000.
How is everything going with the body cam footage for you guys?
I actually texted Captain Estes during the meeting, and I said, we should come up with a fake case to present it to y'all so that you could see how wonderful it is. You know, and we're, we're able to get the body cams from the deputies who are on scene, we're able to get our camera. It goes back 30 seconds, you don't really realize how long 30 seconds is until you sit there and watch it in silence. But it's still, you're able to see things, so it's really, really helpful for us. I put a lot of the questions are, you know, in court, where they're talking about suppressing evidence, well, what exactly did you say? Well, what's the what? And we've been able to, as part of that technology, use other technology better in our office. So I mentioned the, you know, the television in our office, we're able to have like a real case needy, put the picture up on the big screen, talk about what happened, talk about where things were, who did what, really drill down, not trying to fumble through papers, okay, do you have the right picture? Do you have the right picture? It just allows for everything to be much smoother, and more importantly, much more accurate. And so we're able to get better information to each other, and that helps improve our cases. And then our case management system that we'll have, will, one of the reasons that we selected it is that it will integrate in with evidence.com. So right now, we've got some stuff on the shared drive, some stuff on evidence.com, and so it can be hard to make sure that we get all of the pieces together. This way, we will be able to have everything in one place. The case management system will also be able, a lot of victims, the best way to get in touch with them is through text messaging. And so we will be able to text them from the program, it saved the text messages to the file. And so if we're in court and somebody doesn't show up, we're able to say, well, Judge, you know, we texted them on, you know, 120, 122. We have, you know, no reason to believe that they weren't going to come, they confirmed that they were going to come, something must have happened. So it's, it's really, and even the deputies, I mean, they, I've had deputies tell me, I wasn't expecting to like it. I thought it was not going to be great. It's really, really been wonderful, and worked out much better than they expected. So it is really great. I know that I keep using the same word, but like I just, it is just absolutely spectacular.
No, I agree, the meeting here, they shared up, they spoke so positive, the deputies spoke so positive about it and everything about it. I mean, it was completely not what I expected from him, but he couldn't say anything bad about it at all. Look how much more effective we are in our business.
I have to do, I have to do discovery in a big case, and I'm gonna, you know, go through it all, click it all, click share, put in their email address, and I'm gonna know that they downloaded it. So when they say, oh, I never got that email, I'm gonna say, well, actually. So it's just, it's, it's really helpful for everything that we do. And I think it also helps victims feel better about cases before what they call, they know we're able sometimes to use that instead of them, and that can be very reassuring for someone.
Yes, ma'am.
So outside of the new attorney you hired, he was primarily, I think, due to, or required, but because you implemented body cams and his associated costs, are there any other direct increases in your department? Are there any other direct increases in your department related to body cams? I mean, not necessarily in the budget, but in your life, are there?
I mean, so there's the, there's the time. Some of them are gonna have to go on to. Between on the defense attorney, like, there might be some associated like USB drives and that sort of thing. Um. It's, it's mostly in the, the personnel time to watch and to go through them. Um, we do have a five hundred dollar a year license fee. Um, for the pro account. Um, which we may or.
In the Adobe Pro?
Yeah, for the, um, Axon Pro. So the body cam comes with, um, two accounts that are able to redact video. And since we have three attorneys, we went ahead and got a third account. Um, if we don't need that, we're, we're gonna. Not send it anymore. Um, so there's that cost. I think that's. It off the top of my head. We have other, you know, IT quantities. You know, I have a DVR in a case that's two terabytes. So, um.
You have any problem, you haven't had any problems with network speed in terms of?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna prefer fiber.
No, but I mean, there was some anticipation that using the body cams a lot and showing all that video over our network would be like that.
It will, it has not yet, but it will. Um.
We need to, we need to get the long source for it. We need to get fiber. Um, all of our offices, get everybody connected and then hopefully it will not be as big of a issue.
I mean, I, I tried to transfer twenty-five gigs of data to the share drive and I couldn't do it. I had to do it in, in chunks because it. Something happened with the radio and it. It reset in the middle of it. It's, there are worse problems to have. It'll, it'll be fine. I'm not complaining about that yet.
No, 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 we're taking it. I, I think you're doing pretty damn well. That's pretty positive. Uh, it's a lot better. Uh, we'll take, we, we, we know massive deficiencies we're working on.
Yeah, I, I got no, I'm not complaining. We're working on it. We're headed in the right direction, y'all.
All right, any questions? This is not complaining, okay? Let's just keep it at that.
Can I use that in the paper?
Oh, no. Let's wait about thirty minutes and then see where we get.
I'm not gonna be here.
Uh, well, get on this, go to meeting. Mr. Goodlow, come on up and talk to us and let's see your presentation.
Thank you. What am I pointing at? Just right there. Okay. Um, hello, everybody. Um, first of all, I want to recognize, uh, Ms. Barry and Mr. McGee, who are probably two of the most active members of our board. They come to every meeting. They're, um, they are very vocal. They ask a lot of questions.
Thanks, Ms. Barry.
We have a lot of fun.
When you're saying they're vocal, you mean Clarissa is vocal.
Ms. Barry is, is vocal and she has, um, a way of expressing her opinions that are respectful. Um, yet she makes sure she gets them.
Kevin does talk to you.
Kevin does talk. Um, I've also had the pleasure of working with Kevin on the, um, the, uh, the jail board where I try to attend most of their meetings. Um, so what you're about to see is a combination is, is really five years of my work all piled into one document. Um, and this is a very abbreviated version of it, given the, the time constraints we have there here this evening. Um, Madison County is one of eight jurisdictions that are part of the, the, um, criminal justice board. Um, you are the smallest member, uh, which means when there are changes in your jail expenditures, they hurt more than they do larger jurisdictions. Um, we'll get to that last. Um, for some good news, your, um, reported crimes against person, these are largely violent crimes and mostly felonies, um, have dropped twenty-seven percent over the last decade in Madison County. And along with that, your crimes against property have also gone, gone down substantially, twenty-six percent. What has gone up and what is fueling your, uh, increased expenditure at the jail? Um, or what are commonly known by the state police as crimes against society? Uh, these are largely dominated by drug charges and weapons charges, which all often happen together. Um, and specifically, your, um, drug arrests are up sixty percent over, um, the decade. Um, and this chart shows you all the way back to two thousand and one and fits the stars how the number of drug certifications and analysis, uh, that are prepared in every felony, uh, drug case have been climbing over the last almost twenty years. Um. For the first time, I can show you how that's happening. Um, and what we could see is that largely over the last almost twenty years, um, cocaine's dominance in Madison County has largely been supplanted by opioids. Um, first, uh, prescription opioids, then heroin, and most recently a significant upswing in fentanyl, um, seizures in Madison County. Um, what I don't see, which I do see just one county, county down in green, is a significant upswing in methamphetamine. So I simply want to put that on the radar for this county that it's knocking on your door.
It's there.
Uh, Almont County and Nelson County are also showing significant increases in fentanyl. Um, what this has led to is an increase in your, um, booking volume of twenty-nine percent. And bookings are charges, not people. So more charges coming into the jail that are responsibility of Madison County. Um, specifically, it's felony bookings of fifty-six percent over the last ten years, which would make sense if you're, most of the increases in, um, drug crimes and. Probation violations, um, which have just reached the sky over the last decade. Um. Which makes sense if you have more people being arrested on felonies, more people being prosecuted for felonies, more people being placed on probation as a result of felonies. Um, there's gonna be more failure on probation as a result. Meanwhile, the number of actual people you have entering the jail year over year hasn't really changed at all. A little bit up, a little bit down, but pretty much flat over the, over the ten years. So, um, what this suggests is that you have the same number of people coming in on more charges. And that, uh, is up twenty-seven percent. Meanwhile, the number, since you have more serious charges, more felonies, you have fewer people who are being bonded out, uh, pre-trial, staying in jail longer, um, and your, your release, um, rates are down. All this adds up to increases in your average length of stay. Uh, and there are just a couple of things that contribute to the cost that you pay to be a member of the jail authority. One of them is how many people you, um, are at the front door who are Madison County responsible? How serious the charges they're being booked on it and on? Um, how long they're being held before their, uh, their trial and their sentencing? And then the overall length of the sentence they get. And all that contributes to this average length of stay going up. And if your average daily stay goes up, even though the number of people coming into the jail stays the same, you, your average percentage of that daily population at the jail rises as well as your bed days. And what you're really paying for as a board are the bed days that are expended, um, on your inmates. Combination of how many there are, how long they stay. And it doesn't really matter whether they're pre-trial or post-sentence. It's, it's the same cost per bed day, which right now is a little over ninety dollars a day per inmate. We're not even counting the, the overrun, the cost overruns for medical care for someone who has a catastrophic medical issue at the jail and you're responsible for their care. Um, you can see that the proximate cause of the increase in bed day expenditures can be attributed to two basic things, increases in drug felonies and increases in probation violations. This is where your money's going. This is your money slot right here. You want to see what you're spending your money on. Every single one of these is a bed day expended on some type of unlawful behavior. Now, you might say, well, hey, wait a second. Our bed days only went up nineteen percent. How come our costs went up a hundred and twenty-some percent? Answer, the jail, the cost of a bed day has grown, um, significantly over the last ten years, primarily because of the new chunk of the jail that was brought in on service, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. So, um, that jail had to be staffed. So your, your bed day expenditure per inmate went from something like fifty-five or sixty dollars per inmate to over ninety dollars per inmate in the, in the span of a year as they opened that new piece of jail. Questions?
I will say that's the quickest.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I was expecting like another fifty or sixty slots.
Well, I.
That's pretty good.
I created an abbreviated slide set today, knowing that we were, um, that you guys were getting hammered with.
Oh.
Information.
That's really good.
Um. Kevin, you have comments?
You know, I, I'm like Clarissa, I wanted the group to see some of what, because that's, you're really seeing there, the, the, um, the outgrowth, outcome of a lot of things, not just, um, Commonwealth Attorney, um, Community Services, a lot of things, kind of, and more clearly than ever, uh, given the charges and why we've got folks, uh, spending time in the jail. Um, just a lot of things come together and our criminal justice planner can show us how that's ending up for us. And then that, sort of, that translates into money.
The, the one thing I might add is that, and it's a good thing. Um, policing is becoming more sophisticated. Um, prosecution's becoming more sophisticated. We were just hearing about body cams. Um, all kinds of new ways of doing policing, better training, better equipment, leads to better clearance rates on convicted felonies. So the good news is that, that there is accountability for criminal behavior. Bad news is, is that it shows up in bed day expenditures, um, and costs money.
All right. All right, before we go to anybody else, but Clarissa said that she had a solution. Uh, about, about, about like eighty, eighty-five percent of the way through Neil's thing.
Not an idea.
Yeah, we take ideas. Go ahead.
Um, it's an idea that we're, um, I mentioned it. I think Ross is on the virtual sometime.
He is.
Um, that we've been working on a drug court for, seems like forever at this point. But I think it's really only been about six or eight months, um, in earnest. We meet about twice a month, um, to talk about how to move forward. Where we are now is, um, at the funding stage and trying to figure out what are our next steps to actually get a drug court together, stood up, um, so that we could start seeing individuals. And one, there are, first of all, the good news is that there are a lot of grants available. Um, the second part of that is that we are going to request that Orange County deal with that grant, not Madison County. At any rate, the grant will require, um, most of the grants require a twenty-five percent matching. And so it's about, the one that we're looking at right now is a half million dollars over four years, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand over four years. Um, we can do that in, in, in kind, we can do that in cash. Um, where we are now, though, is that we don't have anyone on the drug court team that necessarily has the time to do the coordinating to get things set up. So to do the grant application, to do initial case management of individuals. And so I hope Ross, um, from OAR, OAR, the, the kind of idea, and so it's, it's a little bit chicken or the egg, right? We, the idea is forming and as it's forming, we are here saying, we want twenty thousand dollars for the next fiscal year so that we can use that as a chip as we apply for grants moving forward. And if we do need to draw down on it, it would be drawn down on for a coordinator for the drug court. The idea behind the drug court. That's what you want to know.
Yeah, hell, yeah. I mean, I, 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 I read it.
The drug court is that a lot of those probation violations are people that have substance abuse problems. And one of the things that Neil and I were talking about, and I know Kevin probably is aware from the jail, is that DOC is not always as quick to pick up inmates. And one of the reasons that you might sometimes, the court might sometimes sentence someone to a longer period of time is to get them into the DOC system where they have these really great intensive programs. And CDRJ, simply by function of the fact that it's designed to serve people for a short period of time, doesn't have those functions. It's just not a feasible thing to do. The drug court would be a way to fill in that gap. So it would be a way to get people out of jail quickly. So the idea is that they wouldn't, they'd be in jail for maybe a month tops before they were pulled out and put into the drug court program. It would be administered in Orange. Um, and we would hopefully be able to save us some money on the probation violation. There's also a possibility for, for cases that involve victims, um, like larcenies. We have a lot, shouldn't say we have a lot, because there's not a lot of anything in Madison. But, um. We have more than you would think. People that steal from their parents and their grandparents. And their parents or their grandparents, their family members, they don't want them to go to jail or to be a felon. But this is a program, and I, I know I'm pointing to it and it's not there, but that's a program that is palatable to a victim's family because they want that person to be a part of it. Um, to pay restitution back, to do all of the things. It, it's not, doesn't fall into the appropriate restorative justice sort of, I think that's probably a trademark phrase at this point. But it's, it's that sort of idea of making everyone as whole as possible. The justice system can't make people. Um, but drug court is a shot at them. And it saves you money. So the idea is that a probation violation by itself, one person, ten thousand dollars. Easy. So two of them pays for the twenty thousand. So once they get charged, then they would only go to jail for a brief period of time before they're sent to rehab or, or some.
And, and that would be dependent upon their, like, so if I went to jail and I had a major heroin addiction, um, I would be evaluated by the Community Services Board. That would determine what I needed.
What services?
Do I need a medically assisted, um, detox? Do I need to go to inpatient rehab? Do I need intensive outpatient? And then the Community Services Board is a part of the drug court team. And so Ryan Banks from them comes to all of our meetings. Mr. Lagraff is involved. And so it's, it's that attempt, um, to kind of make it, Halle Pepper is doing your drug career as well. So the Community Services Board will also be offering the same services to Halle Pepper. Um, Madison, we're just not big enough. To support one by ourselves.
No, but by using regionalization, capitalizing on this, and thank you for the explanation. Um, it has rippling effects both monetarily and for the community.
Resources.
Um, moving forward into the future. And that's, that's great. Thank you.
So we're really excited. I can provide, I wasn't really intending on asking tonight, this afternoon, but I'm gonna take what shots I got.
Does anybody, does anybody have any questions for Clarissa or Mr. Goodlow? Thank y'all, but, uh, really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll stick around for.
All right, um, and now let's go to Mr. Carew. I assume he's gonna represent for, uh, for the Jefferson area community corrections. Carew? All right, so you want total $11,567. All right, there you go. All right, anybody got any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Ms. Murray, come on now, or stay there. Yeah, absolutely. Speak. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Livingston. No, Livingston, we got this microphone system, it's real poor. I can hear you, but it's the people on the, on the line.
Okay, thanks. I was talking to Clay just a little bit ago. My budget, I am asking for $9,800 more this year, but $3,500 of that could be taken care of in this year's budget because I need some things for the office that we're going to be moving into in March. So we actually need some more file cabinets and whatever that will fit in the space that we have. So if that's something that I can.
Hobbs, this goes right into that capital budget for this thing, right?
Yes, sure. This conversation is that we're moving to both.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see why. No, but we're definitely going to have to, I think that needs to be pulled out of your budget, Ms. Murray, and then we deal with it on our side.
Okay, that sounds great, because I would like to get them ordered so I can get them there and have them in place for when we're ready to move in March. I apologize for not having a narrative, but really, there aren't that many increases. I did put money in for full-time overtime and also some money for my part-time person. We're going to be implementing the new software this year, this fiscal year, and it may be required to have more, have some overtime hours. The truth is, both of my full-timers are pretty much at the top on their comp time as it is now. So that's why I put the $3,000 in there, and then $1,209 for my part-timer. It may get used, it may not, but I just wanted to have that ability to use it if we needed it. I did increase the bank service charges. I'm sad to report. I think it's going to be this way for the next 18 months or two years. Interest rates are basically in the tank, but account analysis charges at the banks are booming. And so I wanted to increase my budget. I hope I've increased, probably haven't increased it enough, but I'm trying here. And then the only other thing, I did increase the postage $250 and $45 for dues, and that's it. But we, it would be about 60, if we take the $3,500 out.
63.70.
932. And again, I, I won't use it if I don't have to use it, but I feel I need to ask for it.
All right, let's give her a hard time about the dues going up $45.
I know. I say no to that.
No, no on the dues, everything else fine.
Okay.
Our total request basically is 296, 396, oh five. Seems like.
And I was also going to point out, as Brian did, that the comp board is, has in their budget the 2% bonus that is contingent on whether they make the revenues, you know, how they do it every year. And most of the time, we do get it. There have been some times we haven't, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Murray? Ms. Murray, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Tracy. Tracy Gardner. Tracy, hold on, I'll get you a microphone, do all this.
Oh, thank you. I don't really have anything changing that much in economic development, except I did raise dues to, from 300, which was just my VITA membership, to 1,000 because of joining the Quad County Business Summit for their pitch tank. Savannah, Louisa, Orange.
I'm not forgetting. Savannah, Louisa.
Uh, Green. Green. And they give a $5,000 prize. And lots of media coverage for that.
Why didn't you budget Brent?
Turn buying and building.
That wasn't an area that I normally put in, so I didn't know what to put there.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have any questions for Tracy? Everybody's giving us fairly conservative type budgets.
Yeah.
It's not, it shouldn't be, it's not really, it's not real surprising, but I mean, in the same regard, I mean, we're not asking for a lot of grandiose stuff, 2020, help us a little bit. All right, go ahead to Tourism Fund, Tracy.
Well, you know, it's just a straight amount, so there's not a lot changing there either. We just had our brochure redone. And I will tell you, right before I came, I got noticed that, just so you know, our department's Virginia Economic Review, it's all about tourism. And we're actually on page 27. So I thought I would let you guys know that as well.
Or people.
Jean Case, Early Mountain.
Who is that?
Jean Case with Early Mountain.
Are people coming into the visitor center?
It's slow, but they do come in. They are still coming in. And I have signs saying, don't grab the brochures, but now I'm kind of telling them to use the hand sanitizer, but if you touch it, take it. Kind of thing.
All right.
We do already have 14,000 brochures disseminated out to all the visitor centers because everybody was out. So that's a good sign.
All right.
Order 25 total. So, oh, also, sorry. Promotional supplies, kind of like the little library thing you have at the community garden and what Revelation has, that's what we're going to go for as far as putting brochures at White Oak and Old Rag.
What is that?
It's just a really nice rustic little, little library thing.
Oh, it's like at the park center, over it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like overage too.
Things packed full of books.
Yeah.
That's good. All right, anybody have questions for Tracy about the Tourism Fund or Economic Development? All right, thank Tracy.
And I can introduce you.
Yes, please.
The next person. Rebecca Haydock from the Small Business Development Center, the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center. Probably recognizable from all of her TV interviews lately.
Is her deck on here?
What?
Is her deck on here?
I have people popping up at the deck. Oh, yeah.
What is a deck? What is a deck?
PowerPoint.
Oh, good.
Do you want paper copies?
You've already got paper copies?
Let's do paper copies. We're pretty good at reading.
Touch them, but I keep seeing a toucher before I put them.
Just don't let Tracy touch them. Oh!
Right answer.
Thanks, Tracy. All right, thank you so much. Well, first, thank you all for having me today. And I want to let you know that small business and supporting small business is personal to me. I grew up on a farm. My first business was an agribusiness. I'll take this off, I think that's probably okay, right? So you can see the rest of the face. But, you know, those were my four sources of income, and I grew up with an entrepreneurial family. And I felt really blessed in April of last year, when I had the opportunity to take over as Director of SBDC. It was an incredible asset. I felt that it could be put to much greater use. And since working with the counties and people like Tracy, the numbers have exploded in terms of the number of businesses that we're helping. In Madison County, I took a quick inventory. The numbers have just about doubled over the last year of numbers of businesses that we're helping. And it's everything from startups. We've got some larger businesses that have a number of employees. We've got some that needed help doing business online. Of course, people came for PPP and IDOL because we have a local SBA office, so that naturally happened. But we also started getting folks in some really interesting trainings that we have. They came for COVID-19, social media and marketing, patenting basics, how to start your business, OSHA requirements, as well as e-commerce training. So it's been really diverse, what we're seeing in Madison County, but we are starting to, I think, have more of a presence. And, you know, I want to thank Tracy for that. And we connected really easily over Zoom, which is an amazing thing. You can meet with, you know, five counties at once, and a lot of great things have been happening. So I wanted to present to you today, just to tell you a little bit about that. I'd love to learn more about what's important here to the Madison County businesses and how we can best support them. Tracy mentioned the Quad Tank, and Madison will be participating this year, which we're really excited about. We had 16 companies that put together pitch decks to try to get that $5,000 this past year. It was really fun and really great for the businesses. They loved it. But would you like me to go through this deck? Or you all haven't, you know, met me before. I don't know how familiar you are with the SBDC. I want to give you a chance to ask questions, or I can run through this really quickly.
Run through it.
Okay, all right. So the SBDC, we work with companies from concept all the way through to exit. And small businesses, as you know, range, you know, from sole proprietors to 500 employees or more. So we really cover the gamut, everything from thinking through concepts, helping with business plans, helping get bank loans, all the way to mergers and acquisitions, international business, government contracting. We work with all of it. And we're backed, not only by the Small Business Administration, but we're part of a national network. So the SBDC gets a lot of resources at no charge. So when the communities support the SBDC, you're probably getting three times the value of resources. We tap into experts and programs from across the country. We have a really strong program coming out of George Mason University. And we've also gotten a lot from UVA since the pandemic. UVA's given us Propel Teams, I don't know if you all saw that on the news. There were 183 students that worked in the counties, helping the counties, not just the businesses in the counties. There were actually 300 students total that we put to work last year. And that's a new collaboration with the SBDC and UVA. It's never been done before. And now it's a signature course that'll happen year-round. And there's just so many things like that going on. I don't want to bore you all. Our website, which we launched, we didn't have one before, is about 45 pages deep, if you really want to dig in and see, see what's there. But primarily, we provide confidential, one-on-one business assistance. So businesses can come to us. We behave like their partner, and we'll help them with everything. And it's specific to their business. And even if it's an idea at this point, and they're trying to work out the kinks, we do that. So we do that through, we have access to some great research tools that we don't pay for. We have technical and professional experts. If you flip to the, this is actually ground since I printed this. We have a couple more contracted counselors, but the counselors range from data processing, online communications, e-commerce, agribusiness, minority business, specifically loans and grants. There's a broad base. And for Madison County, there's an office in Culpeper. We just took over this area in January, although a lot's happened since last year when I first met Tracy. And so that, you know, there's both offices, but offices don't matter now. And we travel, right? And we'll be doing, we'll setting up days here in Madison when we can be in person, when people can meet with us, but we travel anytime. I won't go through all the details of all of the programs we have. We did over 50 programs of our own this year because there was such a need for things like e-commerce and technology. But the state office also offers hundreds of programs, as to the other SBDCs. And now because things are virtual, people can tap into any of them. And just to give you an idea of what's changed, in 2019, this was before I was part of the office and before the world became virtual, we did less than 900 hours in counseling. This year, we did about 3,000. Yeah, it's, it's been incredible. And that's only with a one-third budget increase. SBA gave us an Emergency Care Act grant, and so that's, and that goes through until next September. So we're keeping those technical experts that we hired, which are being tremendously helpful to businesses right now.
I have that in personal stories for businesses, especially the ones I ran in last year, to help them remain open, matter how expensive it is. They're in the same building as CIC, but different recovery minutes. So they all work well together.
Thank you. Yeah, CIC took over SBDC in January of last year, which has been amazing. They're so supportive. And I don't know if you all know CIC and Stephen Davis, but what a great people. So, you know, specific to Madison, I put some of the numbers in here. We'll, we'll be doing Madison office hours, even though we're doing them virtually right now, where we will be here. We're doing a lot with rural business participation activities. We are now trying to hire a full-time staff member with Go Virginia Fund. We got another level of approval today, so hopefully it'll go through the state. And that person will be specifically for Main Street business, rural entrepreneurship, and minority business. That's going to be their focus. So we're looking for somebody who can really spend a fair amount of time in the counties. Being a farmer myself, I speak agribusiness. I think that that's an area of opportunity for the state of Virginia. I don't know any SBDCs that have a specific agribusiness program, and I know that's so strong in our region that that's something we want to focus on. I don't know any SBDCs that have a specific agribusiness program, and I know that's so strong in our region, that that's something we want to focus on. You know, the numbers are here, we, the numbers were, were small in 2019 and 2020. There were five entrepreneurs counseled and ten event attendees. We have bumped that up a bit to nine and fifteen, but prior to that, in the fiscal year, it was five clients and, and one event attendee. So things are obviously changing. Word's getting out a bit. We'd like to do more. And we are fortunate now that we can do that, you know, on a broad basis, working with Tracy and others. Regarding the, the financial situation, SBA gives us a, an amount of money, and we have to get a one-to-one match locally. They call us their local groups on the ground. They want the local municipalities to say, yes, this is worthwhile, we're going to support it, or they don't give us the support. The leading SBDCs are matched more than one-to-one. They're like a three or four match. We are now at a one-to-two match with the SBA grants that we got. That's what allowed us to hire technical experts and basically triple capacity, even though we just increased the budget by a third. Madison County, I am just looking for participation, right? I know that I'm new to you all. What we're doing here is a little bit new. I am committed to working really hard to meet the businesses, let them know we're here, let them know that they have partners. So I'm, I'm leaving it to you all to decide what you want to do to support the SBDC. The ask that we're putting forth to all of the municipalities is to meet that one-to-two, so we can keep the technical experts we have. And that, we worked out to be $577 per one thousand residents. So if Madison were to do a full match based on your residents, similar to the other municipalities, that would be seven thousand six sixteen. But again, I know we're new, I know you need to get to know us. We're just looking for participation. And then I just put, you know, the budget and what the ask was for the other counties attached. We are also going after additional funds now, because we know that this office can never shrink it back to what it was. So we're talking to law firms, accounting firms. We're starting to see a little bit of activity there. We actually got almost fifteen thousand last year to help support the business. And we're hoping that will continue. We're hoping we're showing them the kind of results they want to see as well. So it'll take a little bit of the pressure off of the municipalities. So maybe I've talked too long, but any questions for me?
Well, our question. Questions?
Yes, I'm sitting here, maybe you talked about it, the, is it Go Virginia, the Helen?
So she CBP, yeah, they used to host the SBDC up until January of last year.
That's, that's where they, how we relate to that.
It sounded, through your reading, it says that you are going to be applying for some funds through the Go Virginia.
We did. We just applied. We put in a ERR grant, it's a capacity building grant, to get another, basically it'll be our first full-time business counselor. Me as director, you know, I spend half of my time running the organization and, and raising money and things like that. This will be a full-time dedicated business advisor. And that'll be the first time we did that. We are also applying for money. We don't ever want to do what the private sector is doing, but we're finding that every week, we have at least two businesses ask us to help them build a website. Because we have e-commerce and online business people who are advisors, and we can't do, we just don't, they're contracted. I only have so many hours I can give them with my budget. So we've asked for some funds, we're, our proposal is to hire a junior WordPress developer to work under our e-commerce guy to crank out two websites a week for businesses at a very low rate. We can do it much less expensively than we can find it in the market, and we want to do it in a way that we teach these people how to manage their WordPress website. In fact, that's, in two weeks, we've already developed the program. And that's available to all Madison County businesses, of course. But they'll get a three-to-five-page website, a short video, which you need now for social media, if they need a logo, we'll do that. And they're going to get business counseling. We're going to make sure that they actually have cash flow. The idea is if they get the website, they generate enough cash, that they can then go into the private market and continue to pay for that over time and build their business. So that's, that's the Go Virginia grant, those two things.
But those businesses will pay you a nominal fee?
No, zero, nothing. Yeah, we're, we're asking for the grant to cover that.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so somewhere, somewhere between zero and seven thousand six hundred.
One dollar.
Higher than the higher middle, right? See how I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions there? Thank you.
All right, nice to meet you all, thank you.
Good to know about it. Yeah.
I think y'all have the first one, not the second.
No, we don't have.
See, I, um.
We have, we have one left.
This is six thousand on the back.
Yeah. Tracy, it's actually.
She, they're looking for.
That was my final one.
Yeah.
Humbly request.
We need to, we need to do something between five and seven. All right. All right, thank you. I'm absolutely shocked that we made it through this, well.
Yeah, good job.
Are you going to go backwards?
No.
Don't talk about any of the ones we went through? The long suckers? All right. Paper copies. Um. I mean, what's your, uh, place of, of investment potential? You want to skip over this? Um, I mean, what else you got on this system? We can't get too long, don't we? All right, let's, let's skip through that. Public comment? Public comment?
I have a question, but it's actually a question, it's two questions. One is, as you know, we have currently have an advertisement out for the county manager that, as advertised, says that that person will be supervising our council. So when I approach the finance department budget, I'm assuming that I'm going to have an additional person in the department next year. If that's not something that is happening, then I at least need to know it from a budget presentation. Should I be assuming a extra person, or should I not?
I think you, I think you assume the extra person would end it, one that we would add to the list with all the other additional requests.
I guess that's the case, if that's the approach you want to take. But if you advertise a job for a supervisory position, and then you don't give that person supervisory responsibilities, I would, I would tell you that you're probably risking losing a person. Because people are looking, when people apply their jobs, you know, the difference between lack of supervision and supervision is, is an important difference.
Well.
So.
I, I agree with you, but it doesn't say a timeline of when we are doing the, when we would have somebody who would be supervisor. And there's Davy Otter, we're politicians. Um, so it kind of works in our favor a little bit. But yeah, I think that we both talked about this, we realize that your office is fairly short-staffed.
It will be extremely short-staffed once we go into ERP implementation.
So it's, it's, it's on our list, definitely not one that we would develop.
The other thing is, is I still have no idea in terms of what is going to be expected to be in terms of budget generation. For example, looking at numbers that you've looked at today and thinking that there aren't big increases in the numbers. Well, the fact is all the big increases are going to be in payroll, because they were compared against the original budget, which, which had a totally different set of assumptions in terms of compensation, so the adjustments. So all of that, in addition to all of the requests for, you have additional payback and staffing changes in the EMS, in terms of the student yet, you're going to see a huge increase in year-to-year payroll costs. And I just want everybody to be prepared to see that, because it's going to be very, very large.
I mean, essentially, we're going to run payroll, separate, right?
So, so what I'm looking for, because I'm now in the process of scheduling multiple meetings with IT vendors, software vendors, is some list of things that I'm supposed to be generating and planning, and I've asked for that a couple of times that I've got. Other than my budgets, which I, right now, I, I see that NOAA's budget was not on here. I still have to go over some things with NOAA. I will have the finance department done, and probably EMS done next week. I will, I, I think it is highly unlikely I will have IT done. IT is going to be very difficult to do. And I have multiple things I have to go over with EMS, with software vendors, and with Bruce. Bruce, I mean, and I have a problem with Bruce, because Bruce's time is very, is very limited as well. So that would be the reason why I would go over. But I think I should have everything.
I'm getting old, I move a little slower.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a lot just here in terms of costs related to IT. I'm doing, that's, that's my.
We need to get initial letter requests, we need to get, we need to get, we need to get a list of the things that.
So, so you need some kind of mechanism. The adverts, that budget advertisement is, is based on a huge amount of numbers. And in past, we've always done it where we aggregated all the numbers to begin with. So you looked at consistently presented numbers. You have done that this year, and you have no aggregate mechanism. And that is a very big chunk of time. And I, if, if you want me to do it, I need to know about it as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm just, I'm, I'm very concerned about not having identified how it's going to be done and who's going to do it.
We'll get something.
Okay.
Um, anybody else got any comments on that? All right, public comment, don't public comment. All right. Um, back to board, information and correspondence, anybody? I think John Shear's thing on Wednesday is probably big news and something everybody's taking up. People that are high-res vaccinated and massive, any of you are.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, and I went into Culpeper yesterday and got my first shot. And the Virginia Department of Health has got two other organizations helping them, but I'm telling you, it was, it was like clockwork. It was a really organized, a nice, that great thing to see. Unbelievable.
Where'd you get your shot from?
I don't know, can you remember her name?
No, I'm wondering. Hey, go ahead, come on.
No, I went to the, went to the.
The only reason I ask is we're in the process of doing a tier, and I think it started last week. When I got my shot, it was from a EMS personnel from Culpeper County. I kind of took note of that, because we were planning on doing the exact same thing, it's taking a little longer, or not a little longer, which is part of the process you've been sort of, and appreciating going through that, to help the community. But it's just, it wasn't a mediate person, it wasn't a army corps person.
This was, this was, I did ask those questions. It was a nurse from Orange County, with the Virginia Department of Health. She was a nurse with the Orange County Health Department. So it was all hands on deck. I mean, those people that were given the vaccination were coming from everywhere.
Great security work when you go. Um, anything else? You need to go any place, uh, talk.
County Board Committee, a closing session for the Virginia Post Section, page 2.2-371181, for discussion on the assignment of court promotion performance, motion salaries, or resignation of the county management seat. 2.2-3711ASL, consultation or legal counsel, by state members of Go Consul, pertaining to actual accountability of such consultation or reading in open meeting, with adverse effect to negotiating or mitigating posture of the public body. And C, 2.2-3711829, for discussion of the border of public contract and bargaining signatures of public funds, discussion of the term of scope of such contract, discussion in open session with adverse effect of bargaining power, or change strategy of public body.
Second?
Which may be second, please, go. And on, ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Aye.
And sign on in close second.
I need two. Two mics.